I hope everyone's getting ready for the holidays.
How you doing?
We'll see if we have snow out there or not. All right, so Commissioners, today we have a presentation to start us off that's related to the first item, and then we have four action items, and then we have a presentation at the end. Just a couple of things about today. Right after Committee of the Whole, we have an executive session, so I'll call for executive session right at the end. We'll go down to the Law Library. This is related to pending litigation. And then we have a Legislative Team at 12:30. We have the reception for Chief Rohinsky at 3 o'clock at the Police Department. I know some of you plan to attend that. And then we have a Lead for Kids meeting at 3:30. And then we have a Commission meeting back here at 7 o'clock tonight. So a busy day as we wrap up this beautiful year of 2018. So with that, let's get started. First item is an update and a resolution to amend the pilot mobile food truck ordinance.
So moved.
All right, so we have two folks with us today. We have Andy Guy from DGRI and Josh Nairmore, our Mobile GR Director, to provide a presentation and fill us in on this. They are the two individuals, among many others, who've been working on this pilot ordinance and have been providing us with updates since we passed it. So Andy, welcome.
Yeah, good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, everybody. You all passed a pilot ordinance a couple of years ago. Our goal this morning is to provide you with a performance report on how that ordinance worked, and then offer some next steps and some policy recommendations to keep it moving. I am a little under the weather, but I've got some tea and some honey here, so I'll try to speak up, and I'm not contagious. That's the important part.
Good, thank you.
Right.
About 10 years ago, food trucks really emerged on the West Coast as sort of a, or I guess I should say reemerged, they've got some long history, but reemerged as a public space activation effort and economic development opportunity. We quickly learned that they do a lot of those things and more. This is just a quick slide detailing some of the benefits that food trucks as a tool can deliver to communities. These conversations also emerged through the GR Forward process in downtown. After that process was concluded, and you all adopted GR Forward's amendment to the City Master Plan, we got to work very quickly on some specific recommendations, and one of those was how to introduce food trucks into the downtown environment. A very extensive participatory process to define what a food truck policy might look like. We had had some, a couple of years of conversation prior to this, so we were building on some good work that the Planning Department and others had done, but really got focused, did a lot of interviews with restaurateurs, focused groups with food truck business owners, reached out to key organizational stakeholders like the Chambers, plural Grand Rapids, and Hispanic Chamber, and the Black Chamber, also Link and others, and then also held a food truck, what we call the Food Truck Town Hall over at Link to talk about the challenges, the opportunities, and the benefits. That all led to some policy recommendations that we brought to you towards the end of the summer in 2016, and that pilot ordinance that you all approved did a few important things. One, that it permitted food trucks to operate on public property for the first time. And I just want to draw that distinction very quickly. It's an important distinction. This ordinance deals with food trucks specifically on public property and the public right-of-way. The private property question, which is a question that comes up and is getting worked on, we'll have some brief update on in a minute, is a different issue with a different policy process. So we permitted food trucks on public property. That really created a handful of opportunity zones in the downtown. We opened up the industrial areas to provide food options for workers in those areas. And then we also designated a handful of citywide parks, citywide, places like Riverside, Richmond, Clemente, MLK Park, some of the bigger, more regional parks, to allow food trucks to operate in those areas. Another important thing that that ordinance did was prioritize public safety. Before this ordinance, we didn't really have an inspection process for food trucks, so there's some, that's happening now, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. It did some things to streamline business licensing, also for the first time, clearly defined vendor responsibilities, clean up your trash, you know, watch the noise, those types of things, to be a good actor in the, in the public environment. And then it established the two-year evaluation period. It was a pilot, and we're back here now to present on you. It said that we should come back and tell you how it all worked, so that's why we're here. We did make a couple amendments along the way. In the summer of 2017, after about a year, we heard that reserving meters to operate in those types of places was not as convenient as it could be, so we worked with Mobile GR to allow pay at the meter, and trucks can pull up if spots are available and just feed the meter instead of going through that process with Mobile GR reservation. And then we added some zones in downtown to make up for a couple that weren't getting, were kind of offline for construction. And then also importantly, added some zones in Uptown, and I just want to clarify, or highlight that for just a minute. The ordinance also creates the opportunity for business improvement zones, neighborhood associations, interested neighbors to bring forward additional zones to add, and Uptown took advantage of that and brought forward some recommendations at that time. And then we were before you again in May to simply extend it to January, get through a food truck season, and align it with the expiration of the pilot and your consideration of renewal. The pilot project partners along the way are listed here. I would note that numerous city departments have participated in this process. We've got about six departments, Parks and OSE, Planning, the Fire Department, the Attorney's Office, the Clerk's Office, and Mobile GR. It's been a team effort. One of the first things we did after you all approved the pilot ordinance was to have some community conversations about what a successful pilot would look like. There were a lot of different ideas about what success meant. This word cloud represents a lot of the things that were highlighted in that conversation. We had about 30 people in a conversation and identified about 60-plus indicators. Some of them are very measurable, like how many people are walking down the street when a food truck's out there. Some aren't as measurable as you can see in there. But I want to tick right now very quickly through some of the indicators that we seized on as ways to measure the performance of this pilot. One was promoting business opportunity. You can see here the number of licensed trucks, in part as a result of the policy, has ticked up over the years. We are also seeing that trucks are open more often. You can see the data at the bottom, 48% of the trucks open more often, and 30% more are experiencing more customer sales, and that's because they're more active in the public realm. Another metric we were tracking was meter reservations and how active were trucks in the public realm at this point. And you can see that that number is trending down, which I think overall, we think is a good thing. It means that people are taking advantage. While reservations were a main way to get out on the street in the beginning, as we made some changes and some amendments and made it easier to pay at the meter, trucks have been taking advantage of that, and that's not as easy to measure. So that's why that number is, is going down. One thing we heard through the conversations about a pilot ordinance was some conventional wisdom, that there's a negative correlation between restaurant businesses, bricks and mortars, if you will, and food trucks out on the street, and some fears that those things might not work together very well. We've been tracking this data since the beginning of the pilot. These numbers are for downtown only, and they start to tell us a little bit different story. It was a very strong year for restaurants nationally and in the state. Obviously, there's always localized issues and differences, but overall, for the industry, very strong. And in downtown in particular, it was very strong over the last couple of years with the 26 net new food businesses in downtown. I, I think one thing that we learned through this process, it's not necessarily food trucks versus bricks and mortar or more established restaurants, it's about promoting commerce and, and really offering a place that provides a variety of opportunity and choices for consumers, but also for entrepreneurs to get out and make, make a living. Another thing we tracked was how active trucks are in public spaces. The top series of numbers is non-special event data, so these are trucks that are taking advantage of the ability to make a reservation in a park, or at a meter, or operate on street. And then the bottom number is the total, the numbers are the total number of hours in the public realm. So we don't have perfect data here, and we also don't have completely complete data. We approved this at the end of fiscal year '17. We had one full year at FY '18, and now we're in sort of a half year of reporting here with FY '18, but the numbers seem to be heading in a similar direction. We've got a good benchmark now to keep, keep tracking this stuff as it goes on. Protecting public safety, another key objective. The Fire Department has been a tremendous partner in this process and has really put in place a rigorous inspection process. They've organized classes and really worked with the food truck community to ensure that we're protecting the public safety as, as, as good as we can. Again, these are inspections and classes and things that weren't happening before. So this ordinance really put us in a proactive position and a way to work to avoid problems such as finding an aging propane tank or things like that. You can also see on this slide that the Fire Department and others have issued zero citations through the process. We've had zero incidents of loss or injuries in the city. We've had a few complaints, primarily around, is this truck licensed? It's plugging into city power? Are they in the right location? That type of stuff. And then we actually started counting thank yous as well in 2018, and we got a couple, got a couple of those, so that's a nice metric to track. Another objective we had was measuring a clear, fair, and predictable regulatory environment, and you can see some of those data points on here. The Clerk's Office has been a very strong partner on the licensing side of this and working to streamline things and make it easier for the business community. Anything else I want to put on that? I would also say the speed of approval through the city process remains pretty brisk. If you've come into the city and you got your stuff together, and your application, and you got your taxes paid and all that kind of stuff, you're getting through the system in a, in a pretty timely fashion. The other thing I would say that we've learned through some of the survey work that we've done is that the food truck community views the city departments as a partner in this work, very solutions-oriented and collaborative, as we've gone through the pilot process, and I think there's a very strong relationship there. Just a couple of more slides, and then I'll turn it over to Josh. One thing that I wanted to highlight, you know, one thing that we often ask around these types of initiatives is who benefits? Those are important considerations, and I just wanted to highlight one opportunity where some new city policy here enabled opportunity and potential for a small business to grow. And Tamale's Mary was a business that you might have heard about over the last year. This was a small business owner, Mary, who was looking to grow from her position, her storefront position out on Burton Street, and open up some new markets and find some new customers. She participated in Transformato West Michigan, which was a city-funded, I believe, process as well. And then with the new ordinance in place for food trucks, she was also able to work with the DDA in our retail incubator, and a local company, Move Systems, which manufactures these carts that you can see, to start to pilot her business out in public areas in downtown. So this was a, this was a partnership and a, a small business opportunity that was made possible by the policy and some of the other investments and economic development tools that we're able to switch on because the, the policy afforded that opportunity. We'll be debriefing with Mary over the winter to see how it went, and hopefully getting her back out there next summer. So just, I think overall, we view the pilot ordinance as a tremendous success. There's always opportunities for improvement, and, and some of that work is, is continuing, and Josh will talk about that in a minute. But one thing that I, I wanted to just run through very quickly was our, the recommendation from the Food Truck Policy Work Group and the, and the partners involved on some adjustments to the ordinance, and then, and then a request for you all to consider moving it from pilot to permanent status. And we're suggesting a few minor and primarily technical changes based on some of the learnings over the last two years. One of those is to clarify the definition of mobile food business. This was a definition that we made up with the Attorney's Office and some of the other stakeholders around the table at the beginning of this process, because we couldn't find one in other model policies that we felt fit well for Grand Rapids, so we're adjusting that a little bit to allow for a, a good diversity of types of food units. The Move Systems cart that I mentioned, it's a locally manufactured one, is one that we wanted to create very specifically and clearly, some opportunity for, and we also distinguish between carts and trucks a little more clearly, things that you push versus things that you stand in. The, a couple of the revisions in here support the Clerk's Office's work to continue to advance a business-friendly licensing process. That has to do with just the timing of licenses and the duration of that stuff and things that they're working on. We, for the first time, are also proposing a limited permit for trucks to operate at special events. We have learned that there's a few instances throughout the year where one or two trucks or a handful of trucks might come in a couple of times a year, but not take advantage of a full year's licensing process. So this creates, this allows the Parks Department and the OSE to talk about a, a, a lower point of entry for some of those groups. And then also adjusting the threshold for generator noise. We started in the pilot ordinance at 70 decibels, and we talked, this probably one of the things that we talked the most about around the table is how do we, how do we manage this issue so that it's not a nuisance? We started, I think, very low, or we set kind of a high bar, I'm sorry, I always mix these ones up. We started a high bar with the 70 decibels in the pilot ordinance, and I think we learned very quickly that that's a high bar to meet. With a lot of the operators, there's significant expense in upgrading your equipment to get to that, even if you can, some of the new stuff on the shelf in terms of generators don't meet that as well. So we are suggesting to move that up to 80 to make it a little more practically enforceable, but I think the Fire Department has also been very relaxed in its enforcement of that through the pilot as we learn about how this noise happens in, in situations. And I think that moving that up also means, as if we shift this from a pilot to a permanent situation, that there will be some more intentionality in the enforcement of that and making sure that we're meeting some of these, these thresholds. That's a conversation we've had with the food truck community, and a lot of folks understand that that is kind of the way that we're moving. I would also say that, just one other thing, this is a difficult issue to measure in the public, public realm because it's context-based. And if you're in a park where there's trees and leaves and with your truck and operating, you're probably creating a different level of noise than you would be, say, operating over by the intersection under a highway overpass with a lot of hard surfaces. So the same truck can deliver different noise results in, in different areas. So I think it's one we continue to wrestle with and will continue to monitor. And then, that's it. And then the other request is to move from the pilot status to the permanent status. And then just one last thing before I kick it over to Josh. Another thing that happened in 2018 was that the U.S. Chamber of Commerce did a very substantial report on food trucks across the nation and cities that are becoming more and more food truck friendly. And this is just a slide on some of the top 20 cities they highlighted. I think they're heavily population-based, and Grand Rapids did not make the list, but we did go through and look at their criteria for what, what, what does it mean to be a food truck-friendly city? A lot of their criteria was around how easy it is to obtain permits and licenses, how difficult it is to comply with restrictions, and then just the cost of operating your, your business in our community. And if you go through this and look at what, not only what we did with the policy, the pilot policy, but then also the changes that we're suggesting, Grand Rapids stacks up very well in terms of the criteria, and we are emerging as one of the more food truck-friendly cities, certainly in Michigan, and maybe even nationally on, on some of these respects. So we moved very quickly. We're happy to answer some questions, but I'm going to hand it off to Josh to talk about some of the continuing work in, in various departments.
I have a question.
Thanks, Andy.
Oh, I, maybe, Andy, before you walk away, it looks like Commissioner Moody has a question.
Yes.
Andy, thank you so much for this report. I'm in favor of food trucks, and I've been all over the United States and have always stopped and got some food from a food truck. I do have a question, and my question is that I didn't hear anything in reference to Grand Rapids for winter months, like for winter festivals and stuff. Is there any plan that says food trucks can be out during the winter?
Yeah, um, I thank you for asking that question. It's, I think it's some conventional wisdom that, that trucks don't operate in the winter, and I think we're learning that that's a very different situation. The pilot ordinance allows trucks to operate year-round. Some, some of the trucks have technical limitations on water lines and how well they're weathered to be able to deal with some of the, the cold winter months, but one thing we've learned through our survey work with the food truck community is that they are active during the winter. I think probably about 30 or 40% of the trucks that we have locally are operating year-round, and we're seeing that number tick up a little bit as they start to, you know, build a book of business.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks to Andy and DGRI for really leading a lot of this effort, and as we kind of look to try to make this more of a, a permanent solution to create sort of that business certainty, we're working to bring this in-house, and the Mobile GR Department will really kind of be leading the continuing of the coordination of those departments. So we just wanted to highlight some of the next steps beyond sort of just the ordinance. A couple of things is the Fire Department has really been amenable and leading on a lot of the educational outreach, but making even additional, more resources available online. And then the Clerk's Office, which is really exciting, is they're working on more of a digital permitting and licensing, which is not just for food trucks, that's for all of them, so that licenses will be available for each business when they come in and not just during those seasons, you know, the ones, the seasonality of the permits. And that's just really exciting for all of our business and licensing categories, so kudos to them. Parks Department is also evaluating a frequent flyer because they've had more and more trucks that want to use a lot of those park spaces, and how can we continue to do that? As well as, as Andy mentioned, the pathway to power, and how can we look for in those frequent locations to have power available so we're not dealing with the generator issues? Our department, the Mobile GR Department, is looking at evaluating food vehicle zones, which is actually just ways you can solidify where they can park in the public right-of-way, and this has been successful in cities like Seattle and DC for creating them, so you make sure they're not right next to a restaurant. It can also be a way for a pathway to power as well, but places that it's harder to serve and activate the public space. And then lastly, the Planning Department is right now formulating some recommendations and looking and doing some work around the private property, which, as Andy mentioned, will be a separate ordinance and separate from this, because this is just for public, and then there would be some other recommendations that would come forward sometime in the New Year related to private property. So just thank you for your time.
Great, thanks. All right, I'll see if anyone else has questions for Josh or Andy. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a quick question about whether food trucks on their own can come together in, in a space like a park and create their own, like, food fest outside of entertainment? I think you had started on that on page, it was page 10, you started speaking on that, Andy, so I was just curious if, if that's something that they do on their own, you know, gather together in one space because they have an association in order to try and attract, you know? I know, actually, on the Calder, they were doing that on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
So I was just curious if they're doing that in other places in the community?
Yeah, they, they are doing with it, doing that, and thanks for asking the question. I think, I think the food truck community is still figuring out how to take advantage of the ordinance and how to work together to build the industry locally, but definitely, I've been experimenting with this on Rosa Park Circle for several years now, a little bit more activation on Calder Plaza, yeah, last year. Probably the most successful example of sort of getting out downtown and doing it has been out Friday nights during the summer out in Riverside Park, where numerous trucks, probably, you know, I forget the number, maybe even a couple of dozen, right, David? Would get together and, and really build the expectation now that they're going to be out there on Friday nights, and it's been very successful. I think it's a model that can be replicated in other parks around the city. I think one other thing we've learned through that is that in some instances, food trucks actually do better business when they're together in a group. And we learned that a little bit with Tamale's Mary. When she was out there outside of a special event or without trucks by her, sales were different than when there were other options around her, which attracted more people and then more opportunities to do business. So I do think the pot approach is a good one, particularly in our parks and areas that we have room to park that many trucks. And hopefully that, that's something that the, the local industry continues to work on.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question. All right, Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Park?
Yeah, Josh, how does this work for like a, one of our parking lots in, in a neighborhood business district? Can they, is it the same fee structure for like renting a meter?
It depends on if the, the lot is metered or not, and we actually, if it's in the neighborhood, we've been waiting and kind of leaning on the corridor improvement districts or the neighborhoods to, to say how they want to go about doing that.
Okay.
But we can be really creative about how we do, but that's public space as well. So we've been really amenable. I think Easttown has done that as part of Bizarre Bizarre, and there's been a few examples of how that's been done, and they've actually gone through the process. And one thing I would also point out is, I think a critical piece that the city managers pointed out is that the education and outreach piece about, about this, because some, you know, like South Town, there's been a lot of work around this, and how do we put together those tools and mechanisms so that the, the CIDS and the neighborhoods themselves can be empowered to be able to have food trucks come into the neighborhoods is, is a really critical next step of that, too. And that, to answer that question is, if it's not metered, then it's really just a permit that we would allow them to use the space as part of a special event. If it is, it would be subject to sort of the same thing, but they could also pay to feed the meter under the policy. They just have to make sure there's enough to meet the fire requirements for separation and a few of those other elements, but that's a great question, and we can clarify that and sort of how to use the, the public right-of-way.
I see Rick shaking his head. All right, any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Just a thank you to Andy and DGRI for all the work that you've done on this, and Josh as well. And I, I try to, when I look at the agenda packet, ask a question in advance so that you can have information, and I did that about the noise question. It was actually a situation where it was on private property, and I'm not sure why they were there, but where we got complaints, it was in a residential neighborhood, but I should have done this myself, but City Manager Washington sent back some comparisons for 80 decibels. I'll give you just one. A garbage disposal is 80 decibels, so that's not too bad. But I really appreciate the comments you made, Andy, about context-specific, and hopefully we can be monitoring that. I, I don't think we've, we haven't had complaints during this whole pilot, so it's just good to know because the community sometimes does have questions like that, and I'm sure they can always call 311, and there'll be enforcement if need be. But thank you, too, for your work at the Fire Department.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? All right, I, I'm gonna, before I call the question, I'm gonna add my thanks to both of you, but also all the departments that have come around this. I think up here we say we want a food truck ordinance, and sometimes we don't realize how much work goes into that behind the scenes, both with the Clerk's Office and the Fire Department and the Parks Department and all of those involved. So really thank you for the work and for being really diligent about follow-through and bringing back regular updates to this body. We appreciate that as well. So with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution electing our appointed officials and approving an employment agreement for the same. This is for our two appointed officials, our city attorney, Anita Hitchcock, and our city treasurer, John Globinski. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments about that? All right, I will call the question then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next that will take us, you know, I should probably just point this out, just so if anyone is wondering, the reason we have two of the appointed officials before us today for a contract renewal is because their contracts were coming to the end at the end of this year. Our other two appointed officials, our city clerk, that appointment and contract runs through the end of next year, and then for our city manager, he was just recently appointed, and so he has a multi-year contract, so his is not up either. So just to clarify that in case there's a question. Oh, oh, sure, and Commissioners, I should also tell you, our city attorney is here, but she is working. She's actually over at the county, sitting in a county finance meeting that has an issue that is potentially going to impact the city. So she is over there, she will be back with us later today, but I just want to point that out. And then our city treasurer, John Globinski, is there in the back, so, yeah. All right, did I call the question on that?
Mm-hmm.
I did, okay. And just to make sure. Okay, next that will take us to our third item, our third and fourth item actually go together, but we'll call up the first one, and that is a resolution approving our water and sewer rates in accordance with our 2018 water sewer rate review for the retail and wholesale partner communities of the city's water supply system and our sanitary sewer system. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, Ms. Molly Eastman is here to talk to us about this.
Hi, good morning. Um, so the first resolution, right, is just for our partner communities. Since I introduced the preliminary rate study in November, there's been no changes. Changes we've seen in the past is sometimes the customer communities will opt to contribute to buy down their rates a little bit. This year, you know, they chose not to, so the increase for the water remains, uh, two-point-seven-one percent, uh, for sewer, for the overall system is three-point-two-eight percent. That's that one. There's any questions on the customer communities?
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
All right.
Let me just roll into the next one?
You know, let me, um, let me keep on, I'll, I'll call the question for this one, and then I'll call up the other one. Uh, no other comments or questions? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, now I'll open up the fourth item, that's a resolution approving the adjusted city water and sewer rates in accordance with the 2018 water sewer rate review.
Yeah, so this is, uh...
Oh, hold on.
Support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, um, so this is specifically for the City of Grand Rapids. We, we own the retail system, so, um, the ordinance before was about for our retail and wholesale customers, this is specifically for the City of Grand Rapids to govern the system, um, and the attached resolution has a particular, you know, rates, like front footage, connection fees, things like that. Uh, for a Grand Rapids customer, the, again, the rates have not changed. That average increase, if you're a water customer, for your quarterly bill, that increase amounts to a dollar eighty per quarter. Um, for a sewer customer, it's four dollars thirty-five cents overall, um, the quarterly bill, if you're a water and sewer customer, still remains at six dollars fifteen cents. Um, also attached to, to this item is, uh, we do the twenty-day comment period specifically for this resolution, so I attached, we, I think we had about three responses, and I attached their, their comments as well as my, my res, I, I tried to personally, personally respond to each of them, so I, I included my responses with, um, so you guys are in on the conversation, so, yeah.
Thank you. Molly, thank you for sharing those with us and, um, uh, your very detailed response to each of them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, you know, it's, it's good, I assume other people are gonna have, um, questions or similar questions to it, so if I'm responding in a thorough way, then maybe it'll head off another question down the road. I tend to think more is, more is more, more is good, so, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. It was, uh, I, and I personally appreciate reading your responses as well.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, the water and sewer rate study is elaborate, takes a while to put together, and, um, one of my, one of the things we focus here on the city is trying to make it as transparent as possible, so hopefully it's more understandable for all, but, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments from Molly?
Just, just a note of thanks. You did respond to someone that had contacted me. Very much appreciate that.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to, oh, City Manager, did you want to say anything?
Um, just, uh, so, uh, my, share my appreciation, but also to, um, just highlight even though that there are rate increases on the way to Swat aside for 2019, uh, our biodigestion, uh, project, as we shared earlier, we, we anticipate that will temper future rate adjustments. So I just wanted to share that with the Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for, um, that reminder. Uh, and I know all of us were part of those conversations for a long time, and, um, again, the investment we're, we're putting into the biodigester, uh, reduces our, our need to build capacity at the system, but then also to provide, uh, revenue stream and then also renewable energy. So, um, I know a couple of questions have come up about that, and Molly, thanks again for your response, but I think it's good to say it again publicly, so, thank you. All right, next that will take us to our fifth resolution, this is a resolution approving the request from Ambiance GR LLC for a new Class C redevelopment liquor license to be located at one-twenty-five Ottawa Avenue Northwest.
Support.
All right, welcome.
Good morning. Um, Ambiance GR LLC submitted their application on November fifth of this year, uh, for a new Class C redevelopment liquor license to be issued at one-twenty-five Ottawa Avenue Northwest. The downtown development area approved the application at their meeting on November fourteenth, and it has been reviewed by all required city departments and is being recommended for approval.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioners, any, any questions or comments? I think we're all familiar with this exciting new venture in the heart of our downtown. Um, I will, I will say thank you. I know, uh, I, we were, uh, eager to get this approved before the end of the year, knowing that we have, uh, a bit of a longer break between the holidays, so I appreciate all the city staff that, um, worked a little bit overtime to bring this forward to our commission meeting today, so, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? We all will be there at the opening, I'm sure, with the ribbon cutting. We see the owners and operators and entrepreneurs there in the back, so good luck to both of you. Uh, so with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you, thanks, Manna. All right, next that will take us to our sixth item, and this is a report and presentation, and this is a report on the 2018 annual Parks Village investment. Uh, and so we'll have David Marquatt come up. Uh, this will, after this presentation, we'll finish up our Cow meeting, and then, um, Commissioners, a reminder, I'm gonna be calling a question about executive session.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners, how are you?
Good.
Excellent. I am pleased to be here today to, uh, present the annual update to the Parks Village. Um, with me today, I've got Stephanie Adams from, uh, Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, she moved on me there, and, uh, Mike La Monaco, um, Board of, uh, Friends of Grand, Grand Rapids Parks as well, uh, to speak on behalf of the Village, um, as we wrap up the presentation. Uh, but just as a little bit of an update, uh, to remind you that, uh, we've been proceeding through this work with our new mission and vision in line, um, with, uh, with all of the projects that we've been taking on over the course of the last year. Uh, this, uh, mission was adopted as a part of the Park Strategic Master Plan in 2017, and, uh, just as a reminder, this vision, this new mission has everything to do with providing inspirational experiences, of course, uh, through the, um, uh, execution of being good stewards and, and managers of our lands and, uh, those investments that we're making out, across our park system in the city. This is all supported by the, uh, the vision, which has everything to do with active neighborhoods, inclusive programs and events, uh, delivering exceptional services and everything that we do, while keeping in mind, uh, diversity and, and ensuring that we're delivering, uh, those, uh, services in a diverse way across our city. And then, of course, grounded in our guiding principles that have, um, uh, focus on connectivity, collaboration, uh, ensuring sustainability in all of our projects and the assets that we're building into our park system, and ensuring, again, that equity is, is of high priority. So as we get into our park system, uh, I want to run through a couple of numbers to begin with. Um, since the Village was passed in 2013, we've completed roughly sixty-seven percent of the park improvement projects, uh, to date. Uh, so that leaves about, uh, roughly twenty-five projects that, uh, need completion and, and major renovation before the end of the Village in 2021, fiscal year twenty-one, uh, calendar year twenty-one, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty. Uh, over the course of the last year, we've engaged, um, over seven-hundred-and-thirty individuals in our park improvement work, and that's a really important number, because what that averages out to is about twenty-five to thirty individuals and residents participating in these, um, really important conversations to ensure that we're building into their parks, um, what it is that they would like to see and what it is that they would like to expect. And another really important number, um, with the Village investment that has been made, we have leveraged a significant amount of outside, uh, funding to support the Village dollars. Uh, to date, we've leveraged little over eleven million dollars. It's important to clarify that eleven million does in fact include the seven-and-a-half-million-dollar MDNR trust fund grant that was awarded for the acquisition of the property here along the river. But excluding that seven-and-a-half-million-dollar, that equates to about a million dollars of outside leverage funding per year to support the Village, uh, financing that has been, uh, supporting our park improvements across the city. This breaks out, um, in the percentages, and we've been, uh, hitting those margins that were expected of, of the city, uh, at the outset of the Parks Village. And on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see those in, Village Investment Guidelines. Forty-five to fifty-five percent of, uh, Village funds were, uh, set to be for rehab and repair items. We're at about fifty-seven percent right now, and then keep in mind that this is over a seven-year period, and so there, those numbers will fluctuate a little bit above and beyond. Uh, twenty-five to thirty-five percent is for park improvements, and you can see we're at about twenty-four percent right now, with three-point-seven-five million. And then fifteen to twenty percent is set for pool operations, and we're at about nineteen percent of pool, of, uh, that total Village investment over the, over the, um, four years that we've been making these improvements. Uh, broken down by ward, you can see the investments that have been made by park. Um, Ward one in the, uh, far left-hand side of the slide, Ward two in the middle. You can see a big spike in the middle of Ward two, I would like to call out, that is in fact the Huff Park boardwalk improvement that was made. That was a rather expensive project, um, one that was, uh, built to last and endure, um, over, over the long haul, uh, here in the City of Grand Rapids. And then in Ward three, you can see in the blue at the end of the slide, the investments that have been made there, um, significant investment, especially in Martin Luther King Park. I'd like to call out then, in addition to these, um, uh, investments that have been made across our city, both, uh, Village funding and leverage funding, there's about an additional one-point-three-million dollars of leverage funding that we have recently, um, heard news of, and that includes a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar NRPA grant to support, uh, park improvements down in the third ward and to support green steward jobs again, uh, over the course of the next year. Um, that's a seven-hundred-and-three-thousand-dollar WEGI fund, uh, grant that has been, uh, in front of view for consideration, uh, that will be distributed over the next, uh, three years. A three-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, uh, MD, uh, uh, trust fund grant, I'm sorry, for Clemente Park, uh, down in the first ward, and then a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar award that is anticipated for, uh, an accessible kayak dock up in Riverside Park. So now I'd like to walk you through some of the park improvements. Um, as mentioned, our new mission is very much aligned with our environment and education. Um, so this new splash pad that was built up in Aberdeen Park up in the second ward has everything to do with a little bit about Michigan. So we've got the Morel mushrooms, Potoski stones, black bears, lighthouses, uh, Grand River Cascades, uh, reflections of Michigan and our culture and our, uh, environment as well, as important parts of this play. We always like to take a little bit of a look at the before and afters. The before on the left-hand side of the slide here, you can see the, the old splash pad that fell out of compliance with the State Health Department, and of course, that, uh, lovely fence that, uh, we used to have around that space is no longer needed, uh, as in comparison to the much more inviting and, um, ecologically, um, oriented and grounded splash pad on the right.
David, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just think it's an important point, um, because I know many of us around this table, we have heard from residents who are upset that the waiting pools don't exist anymore, and that we've converted many of them to splash pads, um, and I remind, remind them that that was a decision really from the Health Department, uh, who came down on us and said that we were not, no longer in compliance with new health codes, uh, and so, we were complying and, and doing the best to make sure we still had water features in many of our parks.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, then I'd like to take you down to a little journey, uh, to our bike park down in the, uh, southwest side of the city. Uh, this has long been a neglected and, uh, nearly forgotten about park space. Um, now with, um, some new vision and, uh, enlivened, uh, resources through the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks and IMBA and the local West Michigan, uh, Mountain Biking Alliance, we've, uh, begun the first phases of a new, uh, bike park with a tremendous amount of features that are both, uh, uh, friendly for youth and those just getting into the skills of mountain biking, but those, uh, that have been at this for a while as well. Chesboro Park, down in the third ward, um, this is a, a wonderful little neighborhood park, uh, um, embedded in the third ward, and, um, again, looking at a comparison side by side, you can see some of the very old outdated play equipment, now updated with, uh, uh, some incredible colors, uh, chosen by the neighbors and play pieces that have value, uh, that is delivering the fun that the children and families expect, uh, within these, uh, vibrant and important neighborhoods across our city. Quay Park up in the, uh, second ward, again, a recently renovated, uh, park space with new play equipment, uh, new gathering places. A really important piece of this project to the neighborhood, uh, that they expressed through the, uh, design and implementation process was, uh, having space for outdoor performances and outdoor gatherings. So you can see in the foreground of this photo, uh, that little grassy area where folks can come and sit with their lawn chairs, with their blankets, and watch. Children and families from the neighborhood, uh, put together little, uh, performances. In addition, this is an important space that can be used by the Quay Academy School, uh, about a half a block away from this important park space. Again, side by side, looking at the old outdated equipment, um, and updated with new pathways and accessible walkways, uh, in and around these important play spaces. Huff Park, this was a really important project for us, um, uh, opened up and celebrated, uh, this last year. Uh, as a reminder, we had a boardwalk that was, uh, essentially underwater, uh, most of the year, um, shown on the left-hand side of that photo. Completely replaced, uh, and engineered in a way that we should not, uh, be running into these issues for a long, long time, um, therefore the expense of this project, but also supported by a three-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, MDNR trust fund grant to support this work. In addition to that boardwalk, uh, we built in some new play equipment. Again, uh, looking at that important, uh, emphasis on ecology and our environment through our master planning process, the neighbors really asked for a new play space up here that was more environmentally focused and focused on that nature, uh, scape, especially given the, uh, eighty acres of natural area, um, within this park space. So you can see, again, the comparison of what we had previous to this park renovation and the new play equipment that is more, uh, natural and, uh, based in our ecology on the right-hand side of the slide. Mooney Park, uh, again, another park down in the third ward, um, some incredible improvements down here. Again, a really important, uh, neighborhood park. Um, it's small in nature and small in size, but, uh, extraordinarily appreciated and valued by the neighborhood. And when you look at, uh, that before image on the left and, uh, the little bit of value that was there, but, uh, in comparison to the right-hand photo where we built in new gathering spaces and, and, uh, some amenities that really, um, uh, make this quite a charming space within, uh, uh, the neighborhood. Ottawa Hills Park, this was an important project down in the third ward as well. This was done in partnership with the Grand Rapids Public School System. So if you recall, as a part of the, uh, new high school here in downtown, there was a land swap that was made that made available roughly two acres of land down in the third ward for available park space. Um, this was, was an important project where we cleared out all of the old playground equipment that had been outdated and was no longer compliant, and replaced it with, uh, one of Grand Rapids' first fully and universally accessible play spaces. That was really emphasized through our master planning process, and we really wanted to test what that looks like, what that feels like, and, uh, to ensure that we were doing the best job possible, we worked alongside, uh, Disability Advocates of Kent County, uh, to ensure that we were building in the, the components and the play pieces that really met all of those standards and requirements to ensure that this was in fact a fully universally accessible play space. Again, some of that old outdated equipment in comparison to those two play spaces that are now part of this Ottawa Hills, uh, park experience. Roosevelt Park down in the first ward, uh, we just recently completed, uh, some, uh, important renovations to this park space to continue bringing this park up to a level of, uh, satisfaction for the neighbors. Uh, this was done in collaboration with the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, Granville Ave, Avenue Arts and Humanities, in addition to some financial support from Herman Miller Cares and the, uh, Peter C. Cook Foundation. Uh, combined, we were able to build an entirely new accessible walkway around this park space that is, um, measured in steps and measured in distance, so people can, uh, get an idea of how far they're walking, get their steps in for the day, and ensure that they're living a healthy lifestyle. But in addition to that, we were able to build in, um, the, uh, exercise equipment that is found alongside of this pathway, uh, to build in some more, uh, physical activity as a part of your, uh, daily walking routine. Wilcox Park, uh, up in the second ward, uh, this was an important project that, uh, popped up on the radar this last year, uh, really a memorial to, uh, Mike Sanders, um, within the neighborhood. Mike died of cancer this last year, his family and friends stepped together to raise, uh, roughly twenty-six thousand dollars, a little over twenty-six thousand dollars to support roughly thirty thousand dollars of Parks Village investment for a brand-new basketball court in this area. Uh, Mike was a big basketball player himself, uh, seen in this photo, a lot of friends and family celebrating this, um, important investment in, in, in this, uh, park, uh, earlier, uh, the, in this year in October. Planned for 2019, we've got, uh, an additional, uh, handful of projects, uh, you can see You can see them listed here. Four of those are in the third ward and with equal distribution in wards one and two. We have started that outreach. Again, we've had well over 700 attendees be a part of these public meetings. That's a significant number. People are engaged, they're interested, and they're really wanting to ensure that we're delivering the maximum and amount of play value and new improvements in spaces across the city. An important aspect to consider as well, when we think about leverage funding, in partnership with the Grand Rapids Public Schools, as I had mentioned, the city of Grand Rapids, in partnership with the school district, received a $703,000 grant from the WEGI Foundation. This funding will be matched by $550,000 of millage funding, in addition to the recently awarded $150,000 NRPA grant. These funds will be used for four sites, both in the first ward and in the third ward. Burton Elementary in the Plaster Creek Family Park, Buchanan Elementary, the Sigsbee Park and School Space, and Kenosha Park. And what we're looking here for are some, again, some nature-based play elements, really led by and informed by schoolchildren and children within the neighborhood. We took a very different approach with some of these projects, and I think it was a valuable approach that we will likely use moving forward. And that is one where we really empowered the youth around the Burton Elementary School with the tools that we typically empower our designers with, and those are the tools of evaluation and inventory and understanding the site and conditions. But then, really beginning to interpret data and that information as well, to deliver, as you can see on the right-hand side there, that plan that really came from the children that will be using this space. And what they came up with were ideas such as log play areas and new walkways and bridges, some outdoor amphitheater-style seating, both for play, but also for environmental education opportunities as well.
David, can I just add, since you brought up connecting children to nature, I just want to say how pleased I am to see this initiative, this connecting children to nature in our partnership with GRPS. We launched that in 2016, and it's been really rewarding for me to see how that's been expanded and how it's grown over the last couple of years. And I know you've been instrumental in that, so thank you.
It's really taken off, and that partnership with the schools has been critical.
Yeah, thank you.
So with the millage behind us, I'd like to talk a little bit about our future needs as well. This chart that is showing up on your screen right now takes a look at three different views essentially. The far-left-hand side column looks at the state of our park system essentially before we began making millage investments in 2014. And when you look at a level of service and what our parks deliver at a national level, we were at about 20, nearly 22% at that Level D, with the bulk of our park system falling into that Level C or managed care level. So with the millage investment that we've been making to date, you can see those percentages and how we've moved most of those parks up into that Level C. We have roughly two parks, one in Ward One, I believe, and one in Ward Two, that are still at that Level D, but those are slated for reinvestment next year, so we should be moving those up to that Level C as well. But really where we should be, based on national standards and recommendations, and based on priorities set by the community, is, you can see in that right-hand column on the far side, 10% Level A, 60% Level B, with the remainder, smaller percentage falling to that Level C or managed care level of service. What this equates to, currently, we are spending about 40 hours per acre across our system, caring for these investments that we've been making. What that equates to operationally is about $3.2 million a year, all of which is supported by general operating fund support. When we are looking at fiscal year '22, that's the point at which we no longer have the millage in place that was passed in 2013, what this equates to is a roughly $982,000 annual gap in need that exists in the future. That is the amount of funding that goes toward our pools and keeping our three pools open and operational. When you look at that recommended level of care, based on national standards and what the community and residents of Grand Rapids have asked for, what that equates to is roughly 86 hours per acre of care that is necessary in order to meet those levels of A, B, and C that were recommended nationally and locally as well. What that means is that we will need roughly $5.5 million of operational support to meet those goals and recommendations, which equates to about a $2.2 million gap in fiscal year '22, in addition to that pool gap that will still exist as well, for a total gap of about $3.2 million on an annual basis, starting in fiscal year '22. This is a page from our financial statement that you saw as a part of our budget process last year, just to demonstrate again, that forecast in fiscal year 2022, how the fund statement really essentially goes upside down and completely depletes the fund balance that has been in existence within the Parks Department in order to cover that pool operational gap that will exist. In addition to the operational end of the needs in the future, the Parks Master Plan identified an additional roughly $41 million of improvement that are still needed. So with the improvements that we've been making since 2013 with the Parks Millage that passed, we're getting about a third of the way done in each of the parks with the needs that exist within each of those parks, leaving about two-thirds of work to be completed within every one of our 75 parks. And you can see that it is broken down by regional parks, community-scale parks, neighborhood parks, and mini parks, all adding up to about $41 million of basic improvements still needed across our system. We are not doing this blindly. We are continually seeking opportunities for diversifying our sources of revenue. That includes a sponsorship policy that we are drafting right now and hope to bring forward to the city manager and to all of you this spring. With the new facilities and components and assets that we're building across our park system, there are new opportunities for rentals and concessions that we are tapping into for additional revenue sources. In addition to looking very creatively at how we staff our organization as well, and we're doing so within the Public Services Group and sharing different staff as resources become available. In addition to that, we could not be doing the work that we are doing without the partnerships that exist. This last year alone, we had nearly 24 hours of volunteer commitments through the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks. 2,400 hours, when you think about that, that's roughly a full-time employee that we've been lended, if you will, through volunteer hours across our park system, which is really quite remarkable. In addition to that, we've had about 1,600 hours worked with our green stewards this last year. That is a program that was in its second year this year. The first year of existence, we focused these youth ages 18 to 24 down around the Martin Luther King Park neighborhood. This year, they were in our downtown core, understanding and learning the value of our downtown parks and what they contribute to the city as a whole as well. Again, if you look at those hours worked, 1,600 hours, we're looking at about a half-time, full-time employee there as well. In addition to those two important aspects, we had about 125-plus volunteers that came and worked in our park system and through the Michigan Cares for Tourism Organization. They brought with them funds, they brought with them volunteers, and as a commitment to our city park system, really helped to bring a new vibrancy and livelihood to our parks throughout the city. In addition to those that I called out specifically, there is a whole host of organizations that support our work, shown on this list here. But to speak a little bit more to that, I would like Stephanie Adams to come up from the Friends of Grand Rapids Parks to speak a little bit about that experience and support that they do provide for the Parks Department. Stephanie?
Hello, welcome.
Good morning. So I've been lucky enough to lead Friends of Grand Rapids Parks now for almost two years, but Friends of Grand Rapids Parks has been around for 10 years, and I think we've been a part of the millage since day one and even kind of coming up with what that looks like through the leadership of Steve Faber, who is also here. So I'd be remiss if I didn't thank him for all the work that he did to set Friends of Grand Rapids Parks where it is and to build this all together. So I know that I speak with many of you on a regular basis about what's happening in our park system, and I think sharing the fact that this is our 10-year anniversary and the fact that, as well as the Parks Department, has been looking at a new vision and focus going forward and really kind of digging in, so has Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and how can we best walk alongside the city and support through the work that we do? And the partnerships that David has been talking about has been really transformational in the work that we've been doing, as well as instrumental in creating our vision going forward. I think for many years, people had seen us as kind of an environmental organization, and we really looked, when we did some strategic planning, on how we can empower our neighbors. Because really, our park systems thrive when people care about the parks in their neighborhoods, the parks in their region. And we have really looked at, how can we empower people? And so it's really changed the model of what we do going forward. And so the three pillars that we focus on, that you guys helped us pass through our MOU with the city, is really, how do we walk alongside the Parks Department in that partnership piece? So, you know, the volunteers and piece is huge for us. We love managing and working with volunteers, because people don't always just want to give of their treasure, they really want to give of their time. And when I talk to so many corporate leaders in our community, they want to come out and get their hands dirty, they want to help us plant trees, they want to help us build a playground, they really want to see that impact in their community. And so, being able to leverage those resources through our volunteer program is so essential. And as David talked about, that gap, there's the 30% funding gap of what is really wanted and needed by residents in our park system. And so we have been working really hard to say, where can we connect with different corporations, connect with different donors that have a passion for maybe a park that they grew up near, or a park that their business is alongside? And so we do that through these unique partnerships. The Roosevelt Park path had been in, kind of sitting out there for almost four years, waiting for additional dollars to come alongside to finish that. And that was one of the things that the residents said that they wanted more than anything. We're talking right now in Garfield Park, they lost their pool. The closest pool to them is Martin Luther King Park, which doesn't seem like that's that far away, but for residents, that's more than a 10-minute walk for them to get there, especially for our youth and kids crossing busy streets. So they are working to raise $300,000 so that they can put in a splash pad. So how can Friends walk alongside with them and help find those supporters that will help do that? Our city is continuously changing, so how can we fit the needs and show up in that way? And so we've been really excited about continuing to mobilize our volunteers, to gather those stories. Our residents, this year, we were able to figure out a way to make the kaboom build happen in our community. And if you're not familiar, we were able to do that at Eastern Park this year, and Friends needed to help raise some funding to do that. And we had some amazing organizations that just stand up and say that they wanted to be a part of that. But even more so, through those connections through Amway, through our connections with our Neighborhood Association, we had neighbors come out and help us build a playground in one day. So if you've never done that before, it's pretty amazing, and it actually all comes together. But one of my favorite stories that came from that was one of the residents who gave a donation, because he'd come out and he'd given his feedback, and he knew how important this park was for their neighborhood. And so he gave a donation, he showed up to be engaged and give feedback on what that park should look like, and then he showed up to help build that park. And that is what we're trying to do through Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, creating that whole opportunity for you to become a steward in so many different ways. And we would not be able to do that without our relationship with the Parks and Rec Department, and also our partnership that we have with the city. So we're excited about continuing on for another 10 years or more, and figuring out what is next. As we come alongside, we're so excited to see the sponsorship policy get passed. We've got a lot of people on board who want to give money and have some creative ways to do that. And additionally, we want to help look at some other big pieces. The board and I have talked a lot about, how can we revamp some of those beautiful buildings in Martin Luther King Park, at Roosevelt Park, that could be year-round resources? We've got some really cool things on the horizon, but we really can only activate our parks in the spring, summer, and fall months. So how do we do this year-round? How do we create another way for us to have more investment in our parks and also a revenue stream to keep going back into those spaces, as well as the other activation pieces that we want to do? So some things that you'll see that we are going to be launching this year are, we're going to be bringing movies into our neighborhood parks, and also with that, bringing along all of the neighbors, all of the businesses in the community, all of the resources. When Friends of Grand Rapids Park shows up in a park to do an event, we never want to show up alone. We want to empower people, we also want to be a catalyst to start things. So this year, we're going to start with three movies in three different parks. So we'll be at Martin Luther King Park, we will be at Clemente Park, and we will be at Eastern Park, so we can activate those, mobilize those, and with our partners, get them started so the next year, we can do six movies, and then nine movies, and continuously have activities that our neighbors can come out to. In addition, we'll be doing barbecue and beautify events, we've been doing those for many years, and that's a way to get residents to come out, give feedback about what they want to see in their parks, tell us what matters. We've heard over and over again that people want us to bring back the Play Leader Program. And if you don't know what that is, back in the day, when kids would come out and parents would send their kids to the park, there were actual adults there that would engage people and teach our kids how to play again. Kids don't play the same way. I've got five kids at home, and I'll tell you, they would prefer their cell phones probably over a kickball. But they just need someone to kind of teach them the way again. And so we hear that over and over again from residents. So we love the work that we get to do, and we love to empower residents, and we continue doing that. And so we really hope that you guys will continue to support the millage, it's so needed. As I grew up here, I remember what it was like to grow up swimming at Garfield Park and to have vibrant parks and have those spaces used, and over the years, things have just changed. And I can't imagine our city without those dollars to continue investing in the way that it looks. So I'm going to introduce our board president, or vice president, Michael Monaco, and he's going to share a little bit more about the millage. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Stephanie, David, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager Washington, good to see you. Well, those are tough, tough folks to follow, and I am honored and grateful for the past six years to be able to serve on the Friends of Parks Board. Also, you know, for a couple more weeks anyways, until I had to step away due to term limits. But again, grateful for the opportunity to lean in to an organization and I think leave it in a better place. And not a better place just for our board and our organization, but for the city. And certainly appreciate the partnerships around this table and throughout the city in making that happen. So it's no question that in a city, a public space can be an asset or a liability. A main street or a park can be a symbol of a neighborhood's vitality and character, or an emblem of its disorganization and poverty of spirit. When it is an asset, it takes on the neighborhood's identity, becoming its star attraction and raising the quality of life for all residents. It's a place where people come together, where they have common investment that is both psychological and monetary, and where they locate the heart of their neighborhood. And many neighborhoods around these parks bear the name proudly, as proximity to such resource contributes substantially to their livability and vitality. We also know this is not always the case. For some neighborhoods in some cities, parks are empty and underused, or spilling over with garbage and illicit activity. They are a liability for their neighborhoods. Of course, many cities and towns simply cannot allocate enough funds to their public spaces to maintain them and manage them at a reasonable level. We know that not too long ago, this was the case right here in Grand Rapids, and we still have work to do. I think you would all agree that C and D level is not acceptable for our city, it shouldn't be acceptable for our parks and public spaces in any neighborhood for anyone. While money is not the only factor, for there are plenty of wealthy cities and towns that have empty main streets, barren parks, or parks are simply a loose connection of ballfields and play areas. However, we do know, as David showed in his presentation, as Stephanie articulated very well, that reliable and stable source of funding is a key to this. When people say that their neighborhood lacks a sense of community, this is what they mean. They feel there's no way for them to participate in their public realm, whether as users or as volunteers, or as financial partners. There may be hundreds of interested, caring individuals in the neighborhood who would like to volunteer or contribute, or simply use that park or downtown in numbers, but they are not organized, and as a result, nothing happens. I'm often reminded from a quote of an incoming Parks Director named Leon Younger in Indianapolis. He discovered this very phenomenon in regard to that city's inefficient, underused park system at that time. He said, "People want to help. I believe that people aspire to serve. However, we need to create the mechanisms to allow them to invest in the park systems." And right here in Grand Rapids, what a difference six years makes. Look how far we've come. Huff Park, Richmond Park, excuse me, Ottawa Hills Playground. A personal favorite of mine, which was on David's list, it was a small one, but Camelot Park. Camelot was a space for me as a child to run and play with friends, my brother, my mother. We should have these opportunities for all of our children and all of our families in this city. I'd like to commend David and his team, the entire Parks and Rec Department in the city for their forward thinking, their accountability, and fulfilling the promises that we've made in the millage. As I said, there's more work to be done, not just the next two years, but beyond. What is needed to continue to reverse this course is bold leadership, both institutional and community-based. Indeed, one cannot find a success story in where leadership from public and private sector does not play a decisive role. The clear lesson from our recent successes is that with careful planning, reliable and stable funding, genuine interests in residents and community issues, we are discovering that our public parks and spaces are more than just places to maintain. They are the seating grounds for our neighborhoods and the places where people come together to help each other. With continued investment that also spurs community involvement in their design, maintenance, programming, and use, the city of GR Parks can and will achieve their true potential as centers of our communities. In short, great cities have great parks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. So any final comments? I'm going to open it up for any comments or questions from this body, and then we will finish up our committee of the whole and head into executive session. So I will start to say, thank you, thank you for the presentation and the update. Also, thank you to our partners, both with Friends of Grand Rapids Parks and all the others that are listed behind David there as partners. You're absolutely right, we haven't been able to make the kind of investment and see the improvements in our parks without a whole host of folks who care deeply, not just about parks, about neighborhoods, and recognize the synergy and the interconnection between the two. So thank you, we appreciate the partnership and all of the work, and also the up... So thank you, we appreciate the partnership and all of the work and also the update. So I'll turn to my colleagues. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Moody?
Yes, David, thank you for this report. I'm really excited of what's taking place with Grand Rapids Parks. But however, I did look on the list, and maybe I might have missed it, and I'm glad Stephanie brought up Garfield Park. I didn't see Garfield or Mulook Park on your list for 2019 projects.
Right. Garfield Park and Mulook Park have received investments already, but we do continue to work alongside those neighborhoods for finding unique and creative ways to fund additional investments that they would like to see, even though initial millage investment has been made within those park spaces.
Okay. Those investments include changes that need to be made in the parks?
Yes, they do, yep. And they were made prior to this calendar year in which we presented on today.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see that in the report.
Yeah. Yeah, and Commissioner Moody, that's a great point. David, for new commissioners around this table, it may be nice to have a breakdown of the last several years. So technically, millage passed in 2013, we started making investments in 2014. So if you could provide a full breakdown to the full commission on 14 investments, 15 investments, 16, 17, and 18, just so we have that big-picture view, because I know especially in those first couple of years, a number of investments were made, and sometimes it's hard to remember.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I just want to underscore how grateful we are, not only for all of those organizations like Friends and those who serve on our Parks and Rec Board and for our staff, but also for those residents who stepped up in 2013 and voted this in, because we still have a ways to go, as you've pointed out, hoping that we can have those recreational opportunities for children and for our emerging senior population. Parkland is another consideration that we've thought about, I think in the third ward, finding some additional land at some point. And don't forget the weddings. Having had to spend money and find a park
And baby showers.
That was outside of the city, I've often thought, if we could do that for our residents, young people could better spend money in a park wedding than thousands of dollars that they need to invest in a house.
Yeah.
So thank you so much.
That's true. Any other questions or comments? All right, and Commissioners, we'll have some ongoing conversations. We all know, many of us around this table were involved in the Parks Millage, the Parks Pools and Playgrounds Millage. Back in 2013, that was a seven-year millage, and so we'll have to have a conversation. I know folks in the community are having conversations about that, knowing that that's going to be sunsetting soon, and so next year, we'll be, I'm sure, all actively engaged in that conversation as well. But with that, thank you for the presentation, really appreciate it, and again, thanks for all the work. A shout-out to Steve Faber, who was the founding director of Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, and also here today in support of their work, so thank you. All right?
May I also
Yes.
Express my appreciation to David for his leadership and all of our community partners for their support, look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you. So Commissioners, with that, I'm going to adjourn committee of the whole, but before we do adjourn, I need to ask for a motion to go into executive session?
Support.
All right, and this is a voice call. Commissioner Rappart?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Anne Jones?
Sure.
And I'm a yes as well. So Commissioners, please head right down to the sixth floor Law Library, and we will go into executive session.